All right, we're going to go ahead and get this started. It is Monday evening, October fourteenth at six P M in the Susan Tully Lives in Boardroom of the eighteen eighty-seven building. I'd like to start the evening off by saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Colorado. One nation under our, in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order, and Mr. Toddlock, would you do the telecall, please?
Here, apology.
Is that what we're getting official?
Oh, from today? No clue until you fix it.
It's okay, you got assigned a bunch of homework.
Every time. You know, that is what happens, you're right, I deserve it, I deserve it, I own it.
You know, we figured you'd take this opportunity to.
To tell me that I'm doing something, okay, got you.
Yeah, we're all in together, brother.
Okay.
All right, I apologize, Mr. Andre.
Here.
Mr. Gaynor.
Here.
There, Gordon.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mrs. Reckles.
Here.
Mr. Sparrow.
Here.
Ms. Corpus. And Mr. Haney Saravia.
Here.
Okay, this meeting has been noticed for state statutes, and I did receive a couple of cards for some community participation tonight, I'm just gonna read a brief statement really quick. Community participation period is an important time for the Board of Education here concerns gratitude, et cetera, of its constituents, that said prior to making a statement, please be aware that each speaker may risk a personal risk if anything they say during community participation of the school board meeting is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. We will start out with Mr. Stubbets, and we have forty minutes.
Well, it won't take all three minutes, you guys have it long. But I just wanted Chris Stubbets and the builders and president of school industry. I really wanted to just be present to say thank you, what you guys do is a tough job, and going for a referendum is a tough thing to do, but I appreciate all that you do. I want you also to realize that there are over a dozen businesses that have joined our cause of this referendum to make sure that it passes and that the word gets out, that people understand the importance of it and what it means for our community. So know that we're out there and we support you and appreciate what you do, but thank you.
Thank you, Eric. All right, next up is Esther Weitzel.
Hi, everybody. I also just wanted to say thank you. So I have something to read, your thank you note to read, so it says, Dear Elkhorn School Board, I wanted to share with you a note of thanks on behalf of the Friends of Elkhorn Schools for supporting all voices in our community and giving us a chance to vote for the referendum on November fifth. You are giving our exceptional community the chance to support our neighborhood school model at the elementary level that fosters a positive hometown school community environment. You are giving our strong Elkhorn community a chance to vote to keep our property values higher and our community safer. You are providing our amazing community a vote to support and keep our dedicated, hardworking, passionate, loving teachers and staff. You are allowing our incredible community to vote to stay incredible by supporting and valuing our students, the way each child learns and a classroom environment that guides them to success. Thank you, School Board, for keeping Elkhorn our strong hometown by ensuring the future of our children stays strong as well. Sincerely grateful, Esther, Friends of Elkhorn Schools. So thank you very much for your support for the referendum and allowing our community to vote for it, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I didn't receive any other cards, so that is the end of our community participation. We'll move on to the Elkhorn Area Middle School student presentation.
All right, Brian McPratt, for the middle school, thank you for inviting us here. Last time I was here, briefly talked about some opportunities that we have at the middle school, which we've kind of derived from as we take a look at those industry-based credentials that students earn at the high school, and I'm like, as we kind of filter that down in our model of college and career readiness, what might that look like at the middle school level? So just wanted to share a lot of those opportunities that we provide our students in our I Discover program. Go ahead, Shella. Seniority Milky is our library media specialist at the middle school, she cannot be here tonight because she has class, but I just want to make sure she gets the credit she deserves for this, she's really taken our program over the last couple of years and made it much more student-centered and student-driven as they're working through this independent work in the areas that they're passionate about and wanting to gain skills in. This has a lot of clickies, sorry. So this is a program again that we use, utilize during our study hall period because as our work within the classroom has become more collaborative and cooperative, one of the results of that has frankly been less homework outside of the classroom, which has transformed our study hall a bit, now there's still kids that need study halls and time to get that worked on, the access to teachers, but there are other students who really have the ability to utilize it in a different way, and that's what we're trying to do with this period, but. So we run terms two through five, and we have a variety of opportunities during each term, we don't do the first term and we're just setting up the library and everything, go on that kind of jazz, and then students are looking to take exploratory or certification classes, kind of self-based during that period and some other things. It's, we'll take our students who are basically have good grades, rights, or have that motivation or want to learn that motivation to do it independently to, their expectation scores, which is our behavior reporting are high, and then just involve their parents to make sure they know what's going on. Go ahead to the next one. And what I've compiled here is a list of the different things that we've offered over the last several years for our students to work on, which we kind of break down into three categories of community, personal interests and creativity. Is the C F A, more kind of things that you may have seen offered in the past through like RAC or other organizations, but I wanted to make those available to kids. Personal interest in the middle, which again, can be anything, we're finding new stuff all the time, and then on the far right getting in more of that creative lens and try to make sure that we continue our programming for students who are apt for more of those things that I'm terrible at, like fine arts, you know, don't ask me the same place. And yeah, so we have sewing at the middle school, which is cool because we all need to go have to put a button back on your shirt, just hopefully that pants, right? You can go ahead to the next slide. This is just an example, we got term two coming up, these are some of the courses that we're, that we're going to be offering for kids to choose from, and they fill out, we go and market brand the program to each study hall and send that home in the newsletter as well for families so they know what options are available to them. Go on. All right, and why would one participate in I Discover? You don't want to hear from me, you want to hear from them, so we go to the next slide. First, we have Adam right there, and Aiden, they are our editors-in-chief for Kickstart Your Week, which is our weekly video announcements. So, gentlemen, why did you join I Discover?
I joined I Discover so I could do something with my extra time at study hall, and I chose the video edit with iMovie because it lets me do Kickstarter and gives me something to do in study hall, and I can make videos for Kickstarter or for my own personal stuff, days that the segments like aren't recorded, so we can't edit them.
I enjoy in study hall a lot for the same reason as Aiden, I have a lot of extra time in the study hall because I got my work done immediately, and it's been really nice not just like sitting there in study hall. I did the video editing part like Aiden, and.
You guys want me to play this?
So you guys do this, you guys work on this together?
Yeah, well, it's like, it could, like, we each, like, video edit during when or during study hall, sometimes it won't be like, we won't be together as we get to study halls.
And we kind of like split up the work for.
Maybe I should split the video.
Hi, and welcome back to lunch. This week we will be having assortment of many others. Monday, there is both schools, so we will not have lunch. On Tuesday, we will be having assorted pizza. On Wednesday, we will be having assorted chicken horseshires. On Thursday, we will be having assorted sandwiches. And finally, on Friday, we will be having surprise meal because it's Christmas feast meal. Have a great week and see you next year.
So that was the end of the school year?
That was the finale. So whatever went wrong, it was a surprise. Guys, why don't you just share what it's like to take those different clips and what you do with them, bring them together?
So it first starts in a recording room that is Milky has, it's like a green screen around them, and students volunteer to be in the video, like Aiden did, and there's Milky records them with a script talking, and then we take that script and put it into a iMovie software, and we edit the video and try to make it look as clean as you can.
Has there been any other ways that you've used your skills you've learned besides for Kickstarter?
Yeah, so on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's like days that the people are like recording in the back room, so we don't have any editing to do until Thursday and Friday. So me and Adam have both used it to edit our YouTube channel. We actually have like a lot of subscribers. That's very cool.
So we get a lot of kids saying that they want to be YouTubers, but they're actually doing it.
Yeah.
Would you recommend the I Discover to other students?
Oh, I wouldn't recommend it, especially if you have free time in study hall, there's such a wide variety of things you can do. There's something for almost everyone.
Me, too, I would a hundred percent recommend it because it's a really fun experience, and I've been doing it for two years, and I hope to do it this year. And it's just a great use of your extra time. And for things like Red Cross and like babysitting, you can make money and like know the stuff for, if you want to do that job, it's up.
Are you doing that as well?
Uh, no, I just did the video editing, got it.
And then we also have Lily and Nicklin here, who have done a couple of our other kind of community-based trainings, so girls, why don't you tell us why you joined I Discover?
I joined I Discover because I finished all my homework before I even had to study hall, so I would just sit there and like read sometimes, so this was like, I don't know, I've been the way that I could still learn things and not just have to sit and stare there.
I joined study hall because like Lily says, we both finished our homework before we got there, and I didn't really want to be in study hall, so when I saw this on my email, I jumped at the opportunity and I ended up liking all the courses.
And what are the courses that you took?
Um, I took the Red Cross medical course, crocheting, procreate art, canvas painting, and three D printing.
I took babysitting, which was a medical class, class, then I did crocheting, canvas painting, and procreate.
Have you used those in other classes or outside of the school?
I sometimes babysit my cousins or sometimes I'll just like paint things at home.
A lot of the courses I took were a lot of like school, like three D printing and procreate art. Thankfully, I haven't had to do CPR on anyone, but if the time comes, I'll be prepared.
Yeah, so I think the total over the years we've had, we usually start the year with more adults in the school being CPR certified, and then by the time we get about halfway through the year, we have more students than adults.
That's pretty cool.
It's a safe place to be. All right, awesome, thank you so much, what other questions do you have for us?
Are you guys getting actual certificates for these, completing these, okay?
Let's see PR training light, I mean, are you just watching a video or are you actually physically?
Well, I, I think that's more of like a high school, there's a high school course that you can also take for that, but what I've been doing, it's just like an online course, and then they show videos of like explaining it, and then you just kind of take it mentally in, but then if they, if you have a CPR done, you can practice it on that, too.
And then for like, back to what you said, for the iMovie, it's more like you don't get certified for it because you just practice, but like if you were to need to do that in the future, it'd be really helpful. And like another example, I made like a movie with my neighbors, and we eventually want to put it on YouTube, but we can't show our faces. But it's my dad's rule, but we I was able to edit it, iMovie, like in the free time when we can't edit the segments, it's really fun.
Are the courses chosen?
There's a student interest survey that we give out, and then curate those to put the highest level interest.
Do you ever get requests for certain things that you don't offer, but then if you've got enough people, you try and go find somebody to?
Yeah, so that's how we brought it, like there's a kind of like a coding for music, more like music production, we brought in something like that, we also have like an electric drum set, piano, like those, brought those things into this student interest.
Yeah, great. Well, that's really cool, I love it, you guys.
So like the motor safety course, is that the online certification where they could then drive the boat?
Correct.
That's very cool.
So you can take it, you can take hunter safety and get certificate.
Well, that one's a little different, so you have to do with like, there's an online component, which is free and you can do that, and then through the state, you do have to go up to like a one-day event. Thank you so much.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of the school board minutes, and the meeting ends September twenty-third, twenty twenty. Do you have any questions?
I'm pretty sure I did not make a motion for approval of the general and other fund bills.
Oh, that was Kevin, yep.
I usually leave that for Kevin.
That's when you remember.
Well, mate, no, the motion was made by Kevin for the bills.
Yes. Anything else? Okay, not been looking for a motion to approve as modified.
I'm hoping to approve the modified, I've suggested minutes, so this is number nine, twenty twenty-four regular session, school board meeting as presented.
There are seconds.
Second.
Okay. So it moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four regular session, school board meeting as modified. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? General and other fund bills.
The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number one-five-three-one-nine-nine through one-five-three-three-seven-seven, wire transfers three-eighty-two through three-ninety-nine, and ACH checks number one-seven-three through two-three-three, the combined amount of nine hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and five cents. And then it provides some additional information, a number bills in your packet, and with three weeks between board meetings, it was a long last.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Turner or Mr. Toddlock?
I have a couple of them, I can find page on the last one.
While you're looking.
Yeah, sorry, I have.
No, that's fine. There was one called N two Y, it was an online subscription, do you know what that was for?
Yes, it's a, it's a service that does our E-rate processing for us, or E-rate's reimbursement we get on different technologies, so I think Mr. Drake has said over a period of five years, we get almost a half a million dollars, so there's a number of forms and such, so they help facilitate that process.
Okay. That's definitely worth.
It's worth subscribing.
It is, and there's questions as to whether the continuation of E-rate in the new media, because my thing is E-rate comes from the funds that the media companies used to pay to use the airwaves.
Sure.
Is what I was saying, and so there's, I read several articles later that.
That might be going away.
Even on your phone bill, there's a line item used to be universal.
Yep.
Some of that's part.
That would have been that E-rate went back to schools.
And then the big red movers, we moved a CNC machine that was installed this summer?
Correct, that was part of that grant that we had.
Yeah.
Development, and then we, remember we sold a couple of pieces of equipment last spring?
Okay.
So this was all part of that cost for the new machine.
Okay, so we were just moving it one place.
Yeah, I think they delivered to the, I'm trying to remember where they exactly, the big red movers had to go get up from the house and then brought it in and install, and it's a pretty big, large piece of equipment. They don't have the, so, yeah, tools to do that.
Yeah, okay, awesome, that was all I have.
I have Committee for Children programmed software. Page seven.
What page are you on?
Page seven. Thirty, thirty-two hundred dollars. Okay, just, I just curious, yeah.
I don't know that, well, the top I have left to go by.
Anyway, I know there's nine hundred thousand dollars for the bells. And then the other one I have is on page eighteen, Neptune Game Time.
Do you know which location this one is, Bill?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The second one was called Neptune Game Time.
Oh, this is under Credit Card Bill?
Yeah, that was on a credit card, that was on page eighteen.
Lorian Ailer.
Yeah, I probably would have to look those up. What I can do in the future, I can, I used to, years ago, I used to bring the invoices in for the board meeting, and then you could kind of go through those if you have a wish.
Bill, I could answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and I just noticed Carl helped me out, remember that I had a communication with John Handle, it was the software so that when they have playlists at games, it cuts out all the foul language or inappropriate language, so there's never a loop.
Yes.
That's good software.
Yeah, that's good.
The second one, that's the Neptune Game Time?
The Committee for Children runs the research-based social emotional learning software, so that might be very good one of those programs.
Okay. Any other questions? Right, hearing none, then looking for a motion to approve.
There, Gordon? Oh, absolutely not. I'm hoping to approve the general fund bills of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, check numbers one-five-three-one-nine-nine, one-five-three-three-seven-seven, wire numbers three-eight-two to three-nine-nine, and ACH number seven-three to two-three-three, in the combined amount of nine hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and five cents as presented.
There are seconds. I'll second it, okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, check numbers one-five-three-one-nine-nine to one-five-three-three-seven-seven, wire numbers three-eight-two to three-nine-nine, and ACH numbers one-seven-three to two-three-three, in the combined amount of nine hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and five cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Esther, okay, student representative report.
Yep, this is ours.
Yes, he is.
As most of you guys know, it's home from the weekend at the high school, so it's super busy and super fun. Um, I have, well, on Monday, I don't have any pictures, but Monday night was the one I played, and juniors won one, people's choice, and seniors won, judges' choice, including five other awards. And then Tuesday was activity day, so over in the right, I have a picture of people playing Mario Kart, and then backyard being the agility center, and then people also decorated the class murals, and juniors won class murals, seniors got second, and then in the bottom left, we have floats, I can decorate the floats, too, and then floats and murals we also worked on after school every day that week. Wednesday, I have this hot pot game, so in the top right, I have a picture of Beth playing seniors, and then also this senior shooting second, including the seniors cheerleaders. And then from the assembly, I have the pictures of court, and then I also have a picture of one of the couples from court in the parade, and then also some people dressed up for dress days.
Over at the middle school in the bottom left, those two pictures, that's the tech ed two students exploring the trades at Lockshott County Expo Center, that was the tenth. That picture at the top with Mr. Bjorg, it's a tech ed student helping with the Altman Youth Build on the Pavilion Project. And then those two images on the right are Hosa and Ahmad, which are both starting this week at the middle school. Over at Westside, the bottom left, those are kids with animated storytelling and PLTW science, enjoying their time. This, that picture is at Westside from Fire Safety Day. Picture retakes are coming up, February twenty-eighth, that's a Tuesday, and then they're looking for volunteers to like have trunks out for the PTA trunk or treat night, which is October eighteenth this Friday.
Okay.
The kids in the bottom left, that's actually the computer science models also doing blockchain coding, learning and bringing the logic.
Um, over at Jackson, they're having a Halloween dance towards the end of the month, and then they're also looking for the trip and treat night, which is hosted at the high school, now beyond the thirtieth at four, and then they're also having a book fair all the week, so Patrick says, I have a kid, we can order books and other kinds of things. Tivis is also having a book fair, and there's going to be a book casing party for families towards the end of the month, they're hosting their annual trunk or treat that's coming up, and then they also just partnered with Bywater wheelchair basketball team and Paralympic gold medalists to kind of show kids how to overcome adversity and seemingly in trouble, the whole struggles.
Really cool.
So options, it's had two hundred seventy-one credits total for enrolled college credits this fall semester, which is pretty impressive. The top right, it's Georgie, the four K and five K class pet, Montessori's classroom, so it's a little guinea pig. And then on the bottom is Mrs. Born Shooters, I think is how you say it, their, her class preparing out blended and academy students for the winter concert.
Or at sixth grade, they have after constructions, and those students just got to see different construction opportunities in the local area, and then for the kids working on the pavilion, they just pour the concrete and then starting to work on the walls and build up the pavilion.
Um, so the picture all the way on the right is from Itty Bitty Bop and Bakers, that was October seventh, so kids enjoying the time, and then Thursday, October tenth, was a story time at nine-thirty in the morning, this picture in the middle, that's and then all the way on the left, it's a Who's. And then all the way on the left, it's a Hoos Woods Ra- Raptor Show, uh, that's gonna be tomorrow, actually, at six P M. at the library.
So they're gonna have an owl there?
Or or other raptors in general.
Oh, okay, sure, that's cool.
Can you guys, can you guys, cause I just found this incredible, I just heard about it over the weekend, the Mario Kart thing that you mentioned?
Oh, yeah.
So y'all get in the gym and play Mario Kart against each other on a big screen? And instead the whole school goes wild.
It, I watched it last year, it was unbelievable.
Yeah, it's super cool, so on Tuesday, there's like the activity day, so I think there's like twelve kids per grade that can sign up and then. There's one like overall winner from each grade and it's Mario Kart and Super Smash Bros. And the winner for each grade will all play each other at the assembly on Friday and like every grade stands out, shoots for their first, it's super crazy and super fun.
That's awesome. That's so awesome.
All right, well, thank you very much, um, we'll move on to the director's report, Mr. Angelo.
Thank you. Uh, John Enzler, Elkhorn School District Community Engagement Coordinator, thank you all for staying. Yeah, so just wanted, I mean, thanks for the opportunity to provide you some information on community engagement and a couple of things that. Um, is going on in community engagement and hopefully give you a better awareness, so if you get questions, um, you can answer. Uh, you can skip that, Jason, so the picture of our team, Esther, thanks for being here. Uh, myself, Mary, Esther and Katie, and that's really our community engagement team, obviously, we cross paths with other. Uh, district employees and directors and administrators, but that's us. So the first thing I want to do is just share some committees that my position is on, so there's the Park and Rec. Um, cycling without age, which is the tri-cha program, where they give rides and they fight with the seats in the front. And that goes along with the dementia friendly community, um, the chamber, the ambassador club welcoming new businesses. And connect communities, Elcorn, which is our downtown businesses and ensuring and creating. Relationships downtown and then the Elcorn Fund, which strongly supports our school district. Uh, we have a lot of features that apply for the grants and receive the grants from that. And then I'm also on the Oktoberfest Committee, Education Foundation, Rotary Board and an at-large member in Elcorn Economic Development. They're all great things and I've found great worst in all of them. I know initially the Ambassador Committee for the Chamber, I kind of went with my feet in the sand, like really another, how am I gonna do this? And as I've done it now for four years, there's great value in welcoming these businesses and I know Julie, you're on there too. And there's also been opportunities where we've had, uh, business owners that have come and given classes at our school. Like there was a guy that owned a radon company. And he said, I've never done this, so let's try it, and there was like twelve people that came to learn about radon. So I mean, there's been some great relationships and partnerships that have come out of all these, but, um, that was just one significant one. The other one is this Lakes area community engagement professionals, um, we are a founding number. It started with a phone call to delve into like, you know, there's more schools hiring people in marketing and community engagement, kind of like we did. You know, it would be really nice to network and then Williams Bay jumped on board and it was the three of us for probably the first. Four, five, six months and then slowly other schools were getting these positions. And we're up to fourteen now and even have, um, libraries and, uh, city rec departments that are interested in. And collaborating and sharing ideas and, um, yeah, it's been really beneficial that I grew up to, to share ideas with and learn new things.
I love that we're the trunks are.
Yeah, I do too.
Well, I, I think it's. It says a lot that, that other communities are realizing, this is an important asset for our community.
Yep.
So those numbers are huge. I was a question, somebody answered it.
Yeah, I think so too, it it says a lot about the foresight of those that form this position. And that they were super smart when they hired me.
We're still working through all that.
Where did that slide go? But but I I do wanna say, I I think what I noticed when, when I came to Elcorn is there was a. For lack of a better term, almost a starvation for the business groups, the community, and there wasn't, there wasn't the bandwidth to provide the. Service or the engagement or the interaction that the different entities were wanting with the school to leverage. The resource, to utilize the buildings, the students and really engage that, and that's why we created the, the position and. Um, you know, developed that because we, we just couldn't meet those needs and the desire that was there to work with the school. Um, so really, and and that's, I I do know it's, I appreciate John sharing that and presenting that, cause it is a. I would say a point of confusion out in the community, not realizing or understanding what their role is, why it's needed, and it really is that liaison. To focus on that connection and interacting with all those different community organizations to bring it together with the school. Allowing the school personnel to focus more than outside that, the student portion. Yeah, and all kidding aside, I'm extremely grateful, um, to be working here, so. Yeah, so facility use, I just, um, you can flip these, and I just wanted to share. This is an all-inclusive of our local businesses and, uh, and nonprofits that use our facilities. But I wanted to share a brief list and highlight some, you know, like Hope Now, who does their, their interviews. Um, and utilizes our buildings and the Walworth County Arts Council, that has their art show. Uh, holiday meal distribution is crazy, it's so fun to watch and I know, um, Jason's been down there too and. Uh, to see all those meals there and going out that door into the community and community coming there to pick up is a, it's a special thing. It's our family, the Christmas tradition. Yeah. But yeah, you can read them all, and like I said, the ones in red were just ones to me that stood out with our partnership of allowing the Elcorn Police Department, Walworth County Law Department. To do their trainings indoors and in our facility and to the fact that they've even been able to pull vehicles in in the winter and do high-risk stops. And and things like that, so. Yeah, Special Olympics, Elcorn Fund, Lakeland School probation parole, uh, for three years now has done their end services and trainings. Here during the day, uh, because they don't have the space in their facility, so. So which, yeah, of all our buildings or of all of our locations, what's the most commonly requested or most utilized facility that we have? Or the high school? The high school, is there a portion or a part of the high school that's used more? Probably the agility center and gym. You know, it it's interesting, I just met with, so I meet with all the outside groups that are gonna use the gym for the winter and we have our meeting and figure out schedules. And who's gonna have what time and what days and what building and it's amazing how fast all of our gyms fill.
Yeah.
I mean, right down to options, to Westside, to Tibbetts, to Jackson, to high school, middle school, um. Between our school, you know, our sports, our middle school sports, our high school sports and our youth sports. It's, I mean, they're squeezing in times in between this and that and, um, it's, it's pretty remarkable.
Yeah.
The, and the reason I shared, I just saw, uh, a post on our Facebook page again, you know, today that. Individual complaining about the agility center and the cost, I know it, it's a big, beautiful building, it turned out very well, but I think there's a lot of. Misperception, one is to the cost, just so that everyone knows and I had asked Mr. Ture. Uh, not too long ago, what was that total cost, it, all, everything done, the, the turf inside, all the equipment, all the furniture. It was six point nine million dollars for that addition, including the weight room, the gymnastics, the cheer area. Um, came out to about, was it a hundred and twelve dollars a square?
Twelve dollars a square foot, which today we know we couldn't. And over sixty thousand square feet, so they just.
Yeah, a hundred and twelve dollars a square foot, to give you an idea, to, to build that building now would be pushing around twenty million dollars. When other schools from all around the state come to look and see what we did.
Yeah.
Um, by building that location, it freed up our suki gym. Because as John mentions, imagine you go into basketball season and you have to shut down one of the basketball courts. And I think people forget what that was like because you had the gymnastics for and the wrestling. For on the suki gym, so the girls' basketball would have to, and boys' basketball would rotate early in length practice. In the one basketball gym that was had. And there just wasn't the space for those clubs organizations, but by building that agility center. Which from a square footage standpoint was so much more efficient than a brick and mortar building, I think originally we had looked at a brick and mortar addition. With another like gym space because we needed more space. And that was a similar price point, and actually, Mr. Keel had heard about the facility at Sussex Hamilton. He said, look, I heard this is a much cheaper, much more efficient model, so we went up and visited and it turns out we got so much more bang for the buck in doing that. We freed up a classroom, cause we moved the weight room from there, we freed up a gymnasium. And we were able to free up the baseball training space.
Yeah.
To turn that into a wrestling gym, so not only did we add the agility center that square footage should be utilized and the weight. It freed up a lot of other indoor space there, so it is something from a price point and a cost. Point that I, I'm very proud of and I think there's a, a misperception to it because it, I think it didn't, but it was cheap, relatively speaking. It was the, they, our, our. Whether the construction managers were floored because they had never done a, a building like that, they couldn't believe how inexpensive it was on a square footage standpoint.
Yeah.
Um, I think the shell was like seventy dollars or something a square foot and put everything in. Um, but I've also said, you know, I've heard people say, oh, well, it's, it's empty all the time. And that's why I wanted you to give a perspective as to, you know, what's, what's a typical, when is it typically closed down or? Um, I don't know if it ever closes down, it gets lighter in the summer. Um, not unused, but lighter, a- and I think, you know, the list is great and, and we, we truly are a destination and a place where people come. To do their stuff, whatever they're doing, whether it's business or athletics, but what's. I always say when I give people tours through the school, whether that's alumni or anybody else, what amazed me about this building. You assume sports, right? Rugby, lacrosse, baseball, softball, on and on and on, you know, soccer, that whole thing. The incredible thing is you see our science classes in there, shooting their air rockets.
Sure.
Because it's high enough and calculating distances in flight and, you know, and all that, and you see the band in there practicing. Because there's a hash marks and you see Elcorn Rec Department doing their flashlight Easter egg hunt in there and on and on and on and on.
Yeah.
And it's so much more than athletics and it brings so much more value to so many more things. I mean, it's things I would have never imagined, I mean, you think sports, right? It's so far beyond that, um, for so many reasons. All right, sorry to dwell on that, it's just a, an area that I, I see and I'm sure you guys see, I want to make sure people have that factual. Information in there, cause it was one part, that second referendum, I believe was around twenty four million, that was. Was about a little over a quarter of the second. Um, so the next facility is the Performing Arts, these are just, I listed some of the, the groups that, um, rent or use. Our auditorium. And then our youth sports, these are our youth sports and when I talk about, you know, our, those that get that first chance at it after our sports, park and rec. Um, these are those groups that we have coming up, our, the other facility meeting that we have is with all those that wanna use the turf in the winter. And, uh, that kind of looks like the stock market in here with everybody, I make them go, all right. You guys figure this out, what you wanna do, I know Kevin, you've been there and, yeah, Kevin and his dad usually go, here's my list, we're out of here, but. But it is, and it's neat to see them network with each other and and figure it out and it's neat to see all the use that. Our students get from our facilities outside of the school day.
Yeah.
Um, these are just some of, of the, uh. Colleges, agencies, groups that regularly use our facility, these would be when you get into your paying customers, certainly not all inclusive, we have a lot. Get a lot of calls from a lot of different people, kind of one-offs, two-offs, where they're looking to rent a space, it's hard to find a space. For people to rent. Now, when you think of where we started with that list and youth groups and all that type of stuff, it's, it's hard, it's, I mean, they're taking spaces that. Um. They might show up at eight thirty and get done at nine thirty or ten o'clock.
Fine.
Yeah, at night, cause that's all that's left, or they may have to come on a Saturday or Sunday morning at six A M. when Bill's working out and. And he's like, who's here? Yeah, they may have to start at six and be done by eight, cause from eight A M. to ten P M., it isn't unusual for that agility center. To be full with group after group after group after group. And that, and that'll run from, boy, November through March, middle of March. Um, which is great, I mean, it's great, and there's a lot of people in there from other communities that are, that are there that go, whoa, this is amazing, it's incredible.
And think about how much healthier our community is because our kids are actually out doing something rather than sitting in front of a TV at home.
Yeah, and we all know as, as parents, the more we can provide that we don't need to travel an hour and a half is a good thing as well.
Yes.
Right, and, uh, we host a lot of Y B L, uh, basket, basketball games. I think we do two or three weekends over the winter and parents are so thankful, like, I don't have to go to West Alice in the snow.
Yeah.
That we can host it here. Uh, and then just, yeah, briefly programming, um. Obviously, helping our community, we offer anything from, at different times, from fitness to cookie decorating to adult lap swim in the mornings. Um, the ones that are kind of special and have turned out to be really neat is the autos, one in the bottom left, our autos department. Uh, we asked them, would you do a basic, you know, car maintenance, like tires, windshield wipers, oil? All that kind of stuff and, and Austin, because he's so great, he's like, yeah, yeah, I'd do that. He said, well, what about if the kids talk, what about if your advanced kids talk, and they do?
That's awesome.
And since we started every year, they're like, let's do another one. And the kids get so much out of participating in that and teaching the adults from our community that come in, how to do these things.
That's so cool.
And we've done that with the maker space as well and some other things, I think it's a really, it's a really neat thing to see our kids engaging adults, adults and teaching adults.
John, where, where, and I'm asking this because I'm interested in doing that, I think that'd be cool for my kid too, but. Like, if I wanna find these things.
Site somewhere. It is, if you go to the little menu button on top.
Yeah.
Scroll down to community engagement, they'll have classes, fitness center, people, things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're all listed on there, you can do an online registration.
Really?
Yeah, and so.
Okay.
Menu, scroll down.
Definitely gonna highlight that.
All the way down to the bottom it is. Where it says community, community engagement, uh, what, no, one more, get out of that one, Jason, it'll say offerings, course offerings. Yeah, so like adult volleyball league, these cheer, football, third grade, fourth grade. Common fitness.
Oh.
Yoga, first aid CPR certifications.
Do we, uh, link this on all and like our, like the community engagement Facebook page or to get people the.
We do.
Okay.
We keep kind of rotating through like as a reminder.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
That's really neat, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through that tonight.
And obviously, we need to think about it, if we're getting like, I don't know where to find that, then, yeah, I probably need to do something to make sure that people are finding.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really, that's really cool.
It feels a little buried.
Yeah.
The website.
Yeah. They do post on the social media posts and they also put plugs in the community connections when those go up.
Okay.
In classes, which is the nailer that those statements. A really neat one is, uh, Jenny Waimeyer and keeping bacon take during the Christmas holidays, so. They go and everybody walks out with this plate full of like two dozen cookies. Yeah, so it's fun to get the kids and our staff involved and, uh, they have some fun with it, doing some stuff like that once in a while.
Yeah, that's really cool that the kids teach the, teach that class, so I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's neat.
Awesome.
Uh, we can go, uh, you know, some of the other things are, you know, I guess doing things that. Teach our students and our community our legacy, whether that's things like the arch or, uh. On the bottom left is a state championship basketball team, bringing them back and recognizing them, and then in the middle, far right. Is, there's a lot of times I get communication from different. is, there's a lot of times I get communication from different groups that are looking for this. One day, we need help. A nonprofit, like we just need help getting all these boxes in. And being able to utilize some of our student groups or certain classes that are like, we're in, we'll do it. Or I have, you know, a study hall now or sometimes, you know, a strength and conditioning or something like that.
Where you had the football teams go out or.
Yeah, we do the great give back where we get about two hundred students every year in the spring that go out and do different service projects around our communities. But so anywhere from the city to other nonprofits. But yeah, those are great tie-ins and and great things for kids to realize, you know, that giving back and the community involvement and that connection as well. And then on the bottom right, obviously working with foundations and nonprofits that support helping enhance our school district areas that so there's activities that can take place. And then Rotary just did this weekend, a warm coats initiative and gave out I think it was about almost eighty coats on the first try. And so they'll do it another weekend. Yeah, it's it's a lot of fun. And then we still do doing snack in a pack, which is fun. And then Carl was nice enough to come. Carl and I work closely together on a whole lot of things. And it's been a great partnership with the rec department. He does a wonderful job. And I wanted him just to share with you real quickly about three programs specifically that provide for our students and our parents. So Carl Sorbit, Recreation Director?
Yes. All right. So you'll see a common theme with these three things. So I've been the recreation director for six years. John started his position before me. So I have gotten to know John through our relationship. I can probably say that I've never had a school district to city relationship like this one. I've worked in Jefferson and Lock Shell prior to my days in Elkhorn. And the relationship that him and I have with the school and the city is fantastic. I'm gonna skip to the second one. So the no school, go back. The no school day program, that was something five years ago. I called up Don Anzalone, I said, hey, I think we have a, I have an idea I wanted to run it by you. The idea was, what do the kindergarten decorators do on the days that teachers need their in-service? And it's a random day, it's not a holiday. And so we do, we provided the no school adventure days. We offer ten to thirteen a year. So basically that follows the days of the Elkhorn School District calendar. So the kids can be dropped off at seven AM, stay till five thirty PM. We go on cool field trips. We go to water parks. We actually used the agility center. One year we did laser tag versus the PD. So that was really fun for the kiddos. They go against police officers with the agility center.
That's awesome.
And then, so you know, that kind of work, it's a program that we can never get rid of. And I I probably say that because it's a a need for the community.
What does it cost for that?
Around four, it's, I think we had to raise the prices just because everything's getting more expensive. But I think it's like forty to fifty dollars. So they literally have coverage with our basically summer staff that's here that also had the school day off that are high school kids. And they get that opportunity to go on some pretty cool field trips. You go to Timber Ridge Water Park and movies and.
That's really cool.
Yeah, so we've been doing that, so.
I'm sorry, Carl, you said, how much was it?
Forty to fifty dollars.
That's way cheaper than.
So we've been doing that for five years now. And the second program and the the newest one is BASH. So that's before and after school hours. So this program was actually, I would say, two years in the making. Two years ago, you know, Sunset Camp ended in the summertime. I heard or overheard some families talking about how how expensive it was for before and after school care, of fact that there's some wait lists at daycares and everything like that. You know, the next thing I do is I call up Don Anzalone and said, hey, I've got an idea. I think I can help. So or the rec department can help. So took a little bit of maneuvering and everything like that. But this is the first year we've launched a before and after school program. We serve over, we serve fifty kids in the AM and PM. So they have the option to do both or anything like that. So a huge shout out to the school district for being open to the idea. We were able to get busing for the kids to get to Westside and Jackson. And like I said, we have fifty kids in the program. And to my knowledge, we're the most affordable program in the city limits right now. Almost by nearly thirty percent. So it's a very affordable option for families. It's the first year that we've offered the program. We're prepared to go up to forty eight kids in the morning and afternoon. But I know that some families already committed to the daycare options and sometimes it's hard to get out last minute. So we've had a lot of inquiries about that. We are typically adding two to three kids per week. So in the beginning, we were like around, hovering around like twenty four, but now fast forward to October, we're, like I said, we're at fifty kids. Another one that was kind of the cool, interesting how it played out. So we were reviewing our hours at the pool last year, kind of going through attendance and everything like that. And we always stay open late on Friday nights from six PM to eight PM. Just to try to address the working family. A lot of many people can get to the pool during our operating hours. And I was looking at it and looking how much we spend. And obviously we play a game of wages and is, are we gonna bring up money to keep it open? And it was a desire to do whatever it takes to keep it open. So again, call up John, I said, hey, I have an idea. What if we somehow partnered with the parent teacher organizations, all four of them in the Elkhorn School District? And we did a Friday night where fifty fifty split, fifty percent of the money goes to the PTA, fifty percent goes back to the Elkhorn Recreation Department. And it worked phenomenally. We were able to keep the pool open, let alone we had some of the highest attendance that week on most Friday nights. We averaged a hundred fifty two people from six PM to eight PM. Just to give you some light on what we did last year, we averaged around twenty eight. So it was a huge blessing for us and the school and we were able to get give some money back to the community. And it was kind of a situation where like, we didn't know what else to do to make a justification to keep open with this is allowing us to stay open for that working family. And they just so happened to be, so some of their day pass proceeds are gonna go straight to the schools that are represented that night. So again, those are just three things that we've done. Obviously, we do many other things. Those are the kind of three highlights that, you know, thanks to John and our relationship going forward, we're able to address those needs for the community. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. That's amazing.
Thank you, girl.
Hey, Carl, Matt, Maddie works for you? Maddie Williams?
We have like, yes, we have like five minutes. Yeah, she just started with us on, hey.
She's very good at recruiting volunteer coaches that don't want to coach. Kudos, sir. And I had your flag football thing in my car.
I'm sorry, do you guys have any questions for Carl or I?
Thank you. It's awesome. All right, third Friday enrollment report.
That's true. Yeah, so you're aware we do two official school counts, one the third Friday in September, then the second one is the second Friday in January. These numbers are used to calculate our our revenue cap each year. Then the September, January combined and averaged to figure out an equalization aid. These numbers represent headcount. So it include our resident students who are attending our school district and open enroll. And so you can see the breakdown by building and by grade. Totals around twenty five hundred. If you were to compare that, I think if you go to the history tab, Jason, you can kind of see.
Thirty five, thirty five hundred.
Did I say twenty five? Thirty five.
Thirty five hundred. I also figured out that twenty five percent of our enrollment.
Yes.
Open enrolled.
Yes. Correct.
Yeah. That's, that's huge.
One of every four students are open enrolled. So you'll see the increase then. This is kind of a summary sheet. So you'll see the totals and then by grade level. And then the change from prior year. So if you're to break this down, then in terms of resident students, resident students were down about seventy three students. But open enrollment were up over a hundred and five.
Yep.
So so that's where you get the the net increase. So.
So that'd be said there. That's awesome.
You know, some of the areas in terms of increase, especially career in college academy, you look at where that was. So four, five years ago compared today is basically kind of like that.
And options.
And options.
That was the COVID year.
Wow, what happened that much this year?
Yeah, we care about ten percent. Of the students shipped to that.
Over during.
During COVID. Cause I I think people kind of, we we pretty much didn't shut down. We only shut down those two months that everybody in the state was required. And much of the rest of the state were partial leagues, partial days, or even remote for an entire year.
Yeah.
And we were face to face.
Yeah.
Because, but we had the virtual school, which gave the option to the parents who, you don't want to be face to face, go to the virtual and we'll set you up there. And so legally, it was about nine, I think it was right at nine percent that chose to do the virtual.
Yeah.
What's going on at Westside?
It's the, Jackson, we're seeing the same thing in regards to when I first came here, probably year two that I was here. They were actually, so this is a number of years ago, but both Westside and Jackson were pushing five hundred students at one point. And Tibbetts was down in the, they got down to the local breeze. And so just as houses have sold and kids have aged out, and we don't have new housing developments going in into those areas. Even when the apartments come in, which technically right now, that's the tronomy development by DMV. That would be a Jackson boundary. It's estimated, you know, we're expecting maybe a hundred school age kids from that development, looking at what East Troy had. Might fall somewhere between a hundred to two hundred, but how many are elementary, how many aren't? And then, you know, so I don't know if we'll even need to divide or split them. But we have less, you know, smaller enrollments at both Jackson and Westside. And we've done attrition to to reduce that amongst that staff there. But we yeah, we don't have young families moving into the district.
Yes.
And that's where we have the seats available via open enrollment, but it's not feeling.
There's no houses for young families to move into.
No. I believe, and I've worked very closely with La Cita and Waller County and advocating for the housing. And I think we're starting to see greater flexibility and housing pieces come in. But and Julie, you would know this as a builder, but I believe the study they did said Waller County in the short, was it fifteen thousand housing units?
Yeah.
As a county in comparison to what the need is.
Yeah. I do know, like Greg just had a conversation with a I can't think of it, Habitat for Humanity. He's like a regional guy and they are looking to be aggressive in the area. So I'm hoping that that.
Yeah. I, I know our youth bill is gonna partner with them down in the, that Lake Geneva area.
Yeah, it's town bench honesty.
It's, it's a lot of houses that need to come in. I know my counterpart down at Williams Bay, they're seeing the same thing where even their school age kids have been moving out as parents have sold their homes and moved elsewhere and a lot of the people who are buying the homes are they want to be in this region, the Lake Geneva area, but they don't have kids.
Yep.
So it's, hey, we're gonna sell our house down south, move up to this area, we like this area and don't have kids, bring them up, so.
The the elementary attendance centers, I was, was thinking back when when Jackson became our third elementary school. We had a committee that had it studied because we don't come two to three and have to divide the attendance centers into three. And that was done in two thousand and four, five. And and the hope at that time was ten years, at least that would be as such. And then we'd have to revisit. Think about, it's been twenty years. We really haven't had to adjust our attendance centers at an elementary level.
Yeah.
Now, and if you look at our open enrollment for those three elementary schools, so whether they're choosing entry or it's pretty balanced between overall.
Any additional questions or anything? Okay. Let's move on to the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget update.
Just a couple of quick updates. As you're aware, when the board takes action in June and improves the preliminary budget, there's, there's three critical pieces of information we don't know. We don't know our revenue cap because we have our enrollments. We don't know our state aids. We don't know our property balance or equalized value. So as we journey through the process, some of that information becomes known. So I highlighted a couple of things. If you just kind of scroll down near the bottom, I think I had the enrollment piece in there. So the change in open enrollment. And then our our resident enrollment there, I updated those to reflect those numbers are. And we were hoping for about a fifty student increase. And obviously we've done more than that in terms of open enrollment.
Though we don't get the same money for an open enrolled student as we do from.
For a resident student, right? Each additional resident student's a little over eleven thousand and three dollars, but that's faded in over three years because of the three year average.
Okay.
And then for a regular open enrollment, I think this year is about eighty nine hundred dollars for a regular student. And then over thirteen thousand for a special ed student.
Yeah.
But you're right, they're different numbers.
Private voucher schools receive thirteen thousand for high.
Yes, correct. Yes.
And what was it for an elementary student? Was it ten?
And it's, I think it was around thirteen.
So we'll continue to advocate that. I don't see why the public school should get any less than
Yeah.
Private school would.
Right.
And one hundred percent of the private school vouchers funded by the local levy as opposed to the resident students, the state kicks in forty five percent. That's still correct.
Correct. Yep.
That's interesting.
Yeah. So the, yeah, the local tax base pays one hundred percent of that voucher and the state doesn't kick any of it.
What happens in the revenue cap form is a deduct in in our state aids. And then we can make up the difference through the annual tax levy. So last year's was five hundred and thirty three thousand dollars.
So I apologize. What they would probably say is we pay the full amount, but it just comes right out of your state aid. And then you have to make up the difference through your luck.
So I think if you, yeah, I just highlighted the changes. We had, we had a math position at the high school. We ended up not filling, but we were kind of reserving that because soon we will fill that next year. It was because of a late press application.
Okay.
When they looked at candidates and decided they'd rather just do an overload for for the year.
Okay.
And then we have a transfer service increase. We had an additional student who's program needs outside of the school district and transportation, I believe is a program in in the Boyd area. And then an ELA position as well. So those are two transfer service positions. And then our valuation, we were assuming two percent and when the actual is a little over seven percent.
Wow.
So the reality is probably two percent would be market growth in terms of our our actual like construction, new, new tax base for the school district. And the balance is basically probably market adjusted. If you look at the the totals on the Department of Revenue website. So at this point, the the biggest piece of the puzzle we're waiting for is our state aid number. And by law, we're supposed to get that tomorrow.
Oh.
So.
That's gotta waste the luck.
Yeah.
Maybe that keep the meaning of.
And and since that's forty percent plus of our revenues, I mean, the the balance is the tax levy. So it's a critical kind of number in in our equation. So it's based on in July, we get an estimate and that's all based on everyone's budget report that was submitted throughout the state. And the number we'll get here tomorrow is going to be based on actual audit and numbers. So it would be the share cost of our district, every four hundred and twenty school districts in the state. And then the MPS factor will be as well. So usually you can kind of predict what those numbers will look like, but there's a lot more variables this year. Plus the S R funds ran out. So a lot of districts used S R funds last year and that's, was considered an deductible receipt, a calculation. So so the variables will potentially influence that number a little bit. But everyone's anxious to see what that looks like tomorrow. And then I think tomorrow we'll find out what the voucher A deduction is too. So that's that number I mentioned about half a million dollars. So those are the two kind of missing pieces. So at the next board meeting, the board will be asked to consider adopting a budget.
Okay.
And what's going to be unique for the first time because of our referendum, you're actually going to be taking action on two potential tax levies. And it'll be contingent on the referendum. So I'm still looking at the wording on that. I'd be honest with you, in my entire career, I've never had. So I'm still looking at the wording on that. I'd be honest with you, in my entire career, I've never had that before. Uh, we've had November referendums, have they always been capital projects? And it didn't affect that year's levy, or this one will. So, um. Anyway, so that'll be at, at the meeting, I'm on twenty eighth, I think, so. Um, and then I, I just put together, the school levy credit is, is kind of an intriguing piece. Because for the first time ever, this may put. More money into this credit than they did in equalization aid, which is the largest aid that comes through school districts, so. Like I just did a quick comparison of what we receive, or I should say municipalities receive as a levy credit. Dollar amount, which is the kind of that top line there. And then if you look at our levy, you can kind of see the percent then of the levy, which is the credit amount, which gets. Reduced on our individual tax bills. And it becomes a number in the upper right hand corner and you'll see that where it says school levy credit impact. But it's difficult, it's a taxpayer to look at that and understand how, how do they get to that number and where does that show up in my tax bill? Um, but clearly it does end up reducing the actual mill rate. But, but again, it's, it's kind of confused, what is confusing and, and it's kind of contrary because state aids are based on property values and the. The lower your property value, the more you get in state aids, where this is just the opposite. So it's distributed across the state based on property values and. Those that have the highest property values get the most credit. So it's a ver- it's an inverse relationship, so I don't, I don't know what the. Policy rationale is in Madison, but.
High property value and low aid may always. Beat the drum, but hey, we're only getting five percent, you know, aid from state. We need, we should get more aid. Even though their mill rates are usually really low because there's a lot of property value to student ratio.
So the only way you can really tell, if you look at your, like your twenty two tax bill and then twenty three tax bill, and you look in that upper right hand corner, you'll see that difference and. The difference is probably twenty nine to thirty percent, so when you factor that in your overall bottom line, it. It does make a difference.
So you, so are you saying that the overall tax bills will be going down twenty nine to thirty percent because of this levy?
Yeah, well, and they did this year overall, and then next year they'll go down a little bit more, but the. Big impact was the twenty twenty three tax bill. Um, and again, the other factor, of course, everyone's properties. You know, assessed differently, so that's a whole nother round of variables and. Which causes unfortunate just confusion, kind of than anything. I wish it was somewhere and you could just tell people this is what it's gonna be. Um, and all we can do is estimate the best we can based on what we know.
So this is the estimated rate before the. So two years ago, I looked at this to see what is the, cause I had a question, what's the tax impact on a percentage basis of the referendum? And in twenty twenty two, it was seven dollars and eight cents was the number. So. I mean, that's a pretty, to go from seven dollars and one cents to five dollars and eleven cents is a. Really big drop on the local property.
And the levy I have in here is, is before referendum, so it was, it was the June budget, but did that include the referendum?
So assuming the referendum is approved, it would add twenty five cents.
In theory, yep.
So that's, it'd be five dollars and thirty six cents, which is.
Similar to.
Really what it is last year.
And how I explain that to the general public?
The taxes are gonna go down, so therefore when we add a lot of aid.
You're not gonna fill any.
And of course, it'll affect everyone a little differently. It could affect you that way and your neighbor, you differ because they gotta reassess.
That, that's a point of confusion as well, because people think, oh, my house got reassessed, therefore I'm gonna pay X more in taxes, well. Everybody's getting reassessed. I mean, it's really what's more checked is dependent upon how much more are the levies.
Not a percentage, yeah.
Okay, gonna give us a referendum update?
Right, um, for, really, we wanted to spend the time to talk about the community meeting, which is on the twenty first at six o'clock. And it's Monday night. And I think for the format that we'd like to do is. Uh, it's gonna be parent teacher conference tonight, so high school's gonna be hopping. There's a. Winter sports meeting at seven thirty. We have the auditorium at six, would like to do the. Um, short presentation that Bill and I co-facilitate, that's an informational piece related to the referendum. And our thought in talking as a team, if the board's open to it, we thought it'd be valuable to have the board. As a whole, just like as a panel and ask, you know, two questions, kind of the, uh. Why and, and, um. You know, why, you know, you support making the decision of our referendum and then perhaps say, um. You know, what's your concern in the impact? We'll have to develop that second question, but we wanna give you an opportunity as board members to share with the community your thoughts on that. And then rather than doing Q and A in that large room, I've gotten some feedback and seen most of people. Like, well, I'd like to go and ask a question, but I don't wanna be scrutinized, or some people literally said bullied as a result of, you know, how I've asked questions. And so we'd like to go into a format similar to what we did on our other referendums. Uh, where we had a Q and A, kind of an open house type thing in the cafeteria, we'll have some of the posters and handouts. And have the board members, administration there to. Mingle and, and answer questions from community members that have questions there. And we'll have some refreshments there. So the Q and A is not in. Then you're not having to put yourself out there in front of a large. Audience, it can be a little bit more direct and personal.
It, it starts at six?
Six, yeah. So we thought six to six thirty, then to the cafeteria for questions and answers, so let's stay and discuss for. But not like. You know, one person talking and everything else listening.
You're saying in the first part. You, we, we go around as a panel and each of us say why our.
Yeah, we developed two questions, get that to you ahead of time, but then it gives the board members an opportunity to speak to them and. And then, um. Then we dismiss and go to the Q and A.
And are we gonna have an end time in mind for the Q and A?
We, I, I can't imagine it going beyond seven, but. I would think a half hour, assuming the first portion's a half hour. I would like to stay there as long as, uh. Neither or whatever, but yeah, I was thinking a half hour should be plenty of time. Depends on how many people turn out and. To be frank, on the building referendums, we did several of these and I don't know if we ever had more than twenty people show up. The last referendum, the operational, we had about a hundred people that came to, to listen and, and be there. Um, that got quite lengthy because of the, the format on how we did the questions and people submitted them. And it didn't really afford for like a dialogue.
So I'm just trying to go engage.
Half hour, so I, I would think six to seven and seven thirtyish tops. Cause then there's the winter sports meeting. Thoughts on that?
I'm, I'm good. Just gauging from conversation, calls and social media. I'd expect a bigger turnout than. I think it's good though. I'd, I'd love to see people come out. Actually hear about it.
Uh, do you like that format structure? As opposed to how we did the last time?
I like the, I like the first part, uh, and then the conversations in the cafeteria, kind of trying to figure out how that would go.
I'm a little uncomfortable with that part.
From, from community members coming up and. You're getting cornered in private, yeah. I don't, I don't disagree with that, I mean. You know, I don't, I don't mind it, but I think others might. Uh, can we be in a setting where it's? The board and then, and then the community in more casual than in the auditorium? So that we're not picked off as individuals, maybe something like that, I mean. I don't know.
If, if you don't wanna do it that way, I mean, we can do questions and answers in the. Room, what happened, I, we've heard that feedback that one, I'm not comfortable. Doing my question there, but two, I think it also creates kind of a debate type. Environment, there's grandstanding type environment where. I think I'd rather have the, the conversational.
Yeah, cause even, and just thinking out loud, so even if the questions were collected and read. What if people wrote their questions out, so it wasn't. So I don't think that people would feel called out or bullied for asking a question that isn't. Atturded to them.
And now, it's, it's saying like an anonymous question, their names aren't on the form.
I mean, you can have the names on there, but you wouldn't necessarily say this question comes from so and so.
And then we could do like a, like a panel, one of us take it or you take it or you wanna chime in.
And then if they wanted to chat with us afterwards, they can.
So you do the quick panel and then just take questions and do it more so as the panel type piece?
Yeah, I think submitting the question. Rather than, cause I, I agree, I think some of us could get cornered.
It could be on the faculty.
That's all right, and I, yeah, and, and we can answer, I think. You know, Bill and I.
She's probably more informed than any of us.
Yeah, all right, we'll just keep it, we'll, we'll do the questions, the written questions and turn that, we'll put a timeline on it and then when we. Get to it, I know John did a great job facilitating with the microphone last time and so forth and I think.
So you're saying to allow audience, the audience members to ask the question personally, rather than write it down, submit it for someone?
No, I mean, write it down.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's true.
Can we maybe put that out there too, that that's the format that we're gonna do and. Maybe ask, maybe, and just in the interest of time and everything going on, maybe ask community, hey, if you have a question, show up a couple minutes early, get your question in.
Or is there a way that they can submit a question online ahead of time? Because if you've got six or seven people asking the same question. You know, it's easier than trying to weed through questions. I don't know, doing it ahead of time might help. And say, these are the most popular questions that people have asked.
And, and still give them the opportunity because.
Yeah. But if we give people the opportunities. Then. Then if we even know some of those questions that are gonna be asked, then we can actually prep for them a little bit better.
We can do that and push that out and. Do a link or, you know, submit your questions ahead, ahead of time.
You, you think it's, I'm trying to think of the, the formality of your auditor, it's just a very formal environment. Does it matter if, if, if we, either the board members or administrations up? You know, on the stage or just in front?
Oh, like the listening session?
Yeah, when we did the school.
Less formal.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
I should like that.
I like it, I like it better. I, I think it. Brings us together. I mean, physically.
We'll use stalls in front of the stage, yeah. All right.
Anything else? Moving on to the personnel recommendations. Can I have a, can I ask a question before we get started on the list? What happened with? All of our special ed, I mean, I think I got six. Six different notifications of. People resigning from special ed positions in the last week.
Yeah, so we've had, well, each one's different, which I can speak to in a.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But the, the reality is that the market out there and that's the, um. Most competitive markets are tracked and retained, and so. It's one where people don't just, we do the same thing when we have a special education opening. We don't just post and hope that somebody applies, we. If someone knows someone and they're like, hey, I know you live here. Will you, uh, we've got an opening, would you consider coming up here and. They make a good offer and it's, it's closer to home and. I've always supported people doing what's best for them and their family and. To be frank, we've had several instances, we have another one, I'm, I'm really, I hate to see her go, but. Uh, we have a person who commutes forty five minutes each way and is a single mother and. And, you know, recently, you know, a couple of years ago, lost his spouse and saying, you gotta go and take that. Your hometown reaches out to your. You know, things like that, so, um. That's, that's the reality of it, there are positions that get recruited.
But I think in the last week, there's.
Yeah, which is atypical, we don't usually lose in the middle of a lot of those for you. Yeah, I can go, yeah, I can go through in, in more detail for. Each individual.
I just thought as a whole, I felt like every, every day we were getting another special ed. Person leaving.
Yeah, and really it's, um, on this sheet, we have one, um, and we did post and. Like Danielle's position, it actually, um, worked out well because we had an individual on maternity leave. And so we actually closed that position, we did some shifting, that'll be reflected on the next. A personnel sheet, so the person that was doing the long term subbing and Gillian's been doing wonderful in the slot where they're at and. And so. We have it covered. That worked, but yeah, this is the personnel sheet for this week, um. But we are, so we are pulling staff.
Okay, okay.
Any questions?
All right, looking for a, um. Motion to approve the personnel recommendation sheet.
I'm looking to approve the personal recommendation sheet for October fourteenth, twenty twenty four, including new employment contracts. Condition upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the personal recommendation sheet for October fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Including new employment contracts, condition upon passing the background check, the district mandated drug screening. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, uh, acceptance of school gifts.
Hey, I did not have any gifts. Oh, I do want to mention, thank you very much, uh, this past week was school board appreciation week, we didn't have a school board meeting. Um, but in recognition of, um, the, the time that you put in your service, I did. Uh, put a voucher there for you to go and pick out a spiritware item.
Thank you.
Of your choice. At, uh, over there, so thank you very much and, uh, yeah, just take that in, it's for whatever spiritware. And as far as upcoming meetings, we've got the personnel committee meeting on October twenty first, if you know. And the next school board meeting is October twenty eighth, and then the curriculum council meeting is Monday, November fourth, that's six o'clock.
All right, um. Looking for. All in favor of your time, then say aye. Thank you very much.